Meeting for the City of Fort Lauderdale. I'd like to start by calling the meeting to order, and if you don't mind, we'll do a quick roll call. Jackie, are you here?
Here.
John, are you here? John Bronco?
Yes, good evening, John Bronco.
Bill Rotella, are you here?
Here.
Coleman Pruitt?
I'm here.
Brad Cohen?
I'm here.
Jay Sheckman?
Present.
I see you, Jay. Michael Weymouth?
Here.
See you also. Mary Fertig, as I mentioned, Mary's going to be a little late, I think. So Bridgette, did I call everyone's name?
Yes.
Okay, great. We have a quorum. Do you agree, Bridgette?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Terrific. All right. So would you all join me in standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance, waving a flag.
Flag of the United States.
Days of America.
Of America.
Stand.
Stand.
We nation.
Under our back, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Joining us tonight, we have Bridget Chiopetta, who is our court reporter. We also have Ella Parker, who is the head of the Sustainable Development Department. Ella, I may have given you a promotion or a demotion there, I'm not sure. But Ella, would you like to present staff joining us tonight?
Yes, good evening, Chair. That was definitely a promotion, so I do not want to take that title away from Anthony Farhado. Good evening, Ella Parker, Urban Design and Planning Manager. With us tonight from staff, we've got Yvonne Redding, Tricia Logan, Jim Hetzel, Adam Schnell, Carlin Grant from Planning, and we've got Assistant City Attorney Dewayne Spence from Sustainability. We have Glenn Hedwin and Kimberly Pearson, who will be presenting to you under the Good of the City, under presentation from staff. And we also have Benjamin Restrepo from Transportation and E. Pacilia from Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you, Ella. Let's see. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the January meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Jackie. Is there a second?
I'll second. Brad?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion, seeing no hands, I'm going to ask everyone in favor of approving the minutes to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing no nays, seeing no hands, the minutes are approved unanimously. All right. Let's see. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak on any item tonight, any item whatsoever, we need you to raise your hand and be sworn in by the Assistant City Attorney. So, Dewayne, may I turn this over to you?
You may. If you could turn, individuals that are being sworn, if you could turn your cameras on for me, please, and raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I do.
Thank you. When you come forward to speak, state your name for the record and the fact that you have been sworn. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dewayne. All right, case number one, PLNVAC 2006 0001. It is a right-of-way vacation. It is quasi-judicial. So I would like to do disclosure, starting with Jackie.
Yes, I spoke to the applicant's attorney.
Okay. Moving then to John Bronco.
Yep, I'm going to recuse myself on the item number one, seven Cs. I was the architect for this project.
Okay.
So I have a conflict.
I have nothing to disclose.
Bill Rotella?
I spoke with applicant's attorney and did a site visit.
Let's see. Mike Weymouth?
I did a site visit.
Jay Sheckman?
With applicant's attorney.
And I spoke, Mary, are you with us yet? I spoke to applicant's attorney, and I also did a site visit. So I will turn it over to Andrew.
If I may, before Andrew speaks, a member of Bronco, if you would please remember to submit the disclosure form to staff at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Step out of his living room, too.
Well, in the digital environment, having his camera off as he does.
All right. Andrew, it is you.
Perfect. Good evening, Chair. My name is Andrew Shine with Ockery and Chalkis, and I'm here representing the property owner tonight. I will share my screen, if you don't mind. Let me know if you can see it all right. Can we all see an aerial?
Yes.
Oh, let me try this again. Hold on. We can still see it?
Yes.
Perfect. So the property is located at 1500 West Broward Boulevard. It's right as soon as you come off of I-95 going east on Broward. I'm going to have to start sharing again. Apparently, I can't do full screen. One second. Brief technical.
Andrew is joining us from Utah.
I am in right now. All right. I'm going to have to go back a few slides. So this is a further, this is a close-up aerial. We'll do the further out, right off of Broward Boulevard coming east, right off of 95, it is on the northwesternmost corner of Sailboat Bend. This is a close to the property. The property encompasses two different parcels. One is the west, where there's currently a marina there. They do boat sales. And the east will do a closer-up picture. The east is a tire shop right now. This is what the tire shop looks like. It is not the most aesthetically pleasing entrance to Fort Lauderdale coming off of 95. And as a brief background, this application tonight is just for a right-of-way vacation. We will be coming back on the March Planning and Zoning Board for a site plan and a rezoning. The site plan, it's a site plan level three for a conditional use for the marina. So we'll be back on the march tonight. It's just the right-of-way vacation. And the right-of-way that we're proposing to vacate is a portion of Southwest 15th Terrace right here. This is coming back next month, but this is what the tire shop will look like after the project is completed. So getting rid of all the auto repair uses, the tire sale uses, and it's just going to be marine and boat sale uses here. This is currently the end of Southwest 15th Terrace before you get into Sailboat Bend. The city did block it off with this fence in 2018. It's been blocked off in some form or fashion for the most, for the better part of the last 12 years or so. And it's not currently used as any vehicular travel way or pedestrian travel way. It's blocked off to the best extent that it could be with a fence. There are some portions on the side here where people can still sneak into Sailboat Bend, but the city did come in and block off that area from, to block people on the commercial corridor of Broward to going into the single-family neighborhood or into Sailboat Bend. This is what it looks like now. It's not in the greatest condition. But we're proposing, this is the site plan that we're proposing with the vacation. So zoom in a little bit. The area of Southwest 15th Terrace in the yellow is what we're proposing to vacate. This red here is a proposed five-foot-high masonry wall to fully block off the commercial corridor of Broward and really separate it from the Sailboat Bend neighborhood. We did present this to the Sailboat Bend Civic Association in August of last year. They did vote unanimously to approve the project, and we had another neighborhood association meeting in September, and that was the Dorsey River Bend Civic Association and the Riverside Park Civic Association as well, since all three of those are located within 300 feet of this application. This, again, will be coming to you next month, but this is just the overall site plan with the wall back here. the wall back here, blocking off that commercial use from the neighborhood and much, much improved landscaping on the buffer there. So that's all that we're here for tonight, is the right-of-way vacation. We do believe it meets all the criteria. It's not used for public purposes at all right now, and it's been blocked off for a number of years. And there are some utilities in the right-of-way, but we're proposing to grant a utility easement over that area. So I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Terrific. I have a question, Andrew. I, seems like a lovely project, I'd like to let everyone know that Vice Chair Mary Furtig has joined the meeting.
Thank you.
Mary, do you have any disclosures on item number one?
Yes, I visited the site, and I have been here since the beginning. I just couldn't get my microphone to work.
Okay, great. Andrew, seems like a lovely project, my, this is more of a comment than anything. This city suffers from a number of street closures that happened at a time when they made sense, and in certain respects, I don't believe they make sense anymore. This, if this street were opened up, there would be ingress and egress into the neighborhood that might alleviate traffic on some other streets. I mean, I know you presented to the neighborhood, but was there any discussion of whether or not they would like to see this 15th opened up?
I can't fully speak for the neighborhood. What, the overall sentiment at the meeting was that they are happy to have this closed. The, there are a number of, I got to put this in a nicer, there are a number of negative elements that, that that entrance provided into the neighborhood, and I didn't get any concerns at that meeting of needing an additional vehicular accessway in and out of the neighborhood. And, but again, I can't speak for them, but they, that was not a mention at all.
Sure. Let me ask staff, has, was any consideration given at the time of this application to considering whether or not to open that street?
Madam Chair, this is Yvonne Redding, Urban Planning. We met with the applicant, and we discussed the previous road closure that was done back in 1992. That was approved by the zoning board back then. However, it never went forward to City Commission. However, the city did support the closure, which is why it ended up with the closure that exists today. We did ask the applicant if they could provide at least pedestrian access through that area, and that was not agreeable with them with the submittal.
Okay, so there's been no conversation, there's been no, there's been no look by the city at whether or not it would be wise to open this road?
Not to vehicular access, but we would, we did want pedestrian access.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Jackie?
Yeah, I'm guessing that this originally was done when Sailboat Bend was one of the original master plan neighborhoods, and I'm sure it was designed to, you know, reduce crime, get rid of cut-through traffic. Obviously, so since it's been closed, or for the reasons it was done, I doubt very seriously if there's a high demand for anyone wanting to now start cutting through the neighborhood. Now, we do know there's a lot of people like to cut through neighborhoods, but I don't know what this destination might be. So I think it would be, I can't even imagine opening that street up and not closing it.
And if I can jump in and add, if you don't mind, the overall sentiment was the complete opposite of wanting, wanting to open that. We did look at staff's recommendation of pedestrian access there. One, that was not wanted either. Two, the wall is a, it's actually a ULDR requirement for neighborhood compatibility to put the wall there. When you have the commercial uses abutting residential neighborhoods, you have to have that five-foot masonry wall and the 10-foot landscape buffer. So the wall, we're doing the wall because it was a ULDR requirement.
So Andrew, there was a project on Sunrise Boulevard, much like this. They vacated a portion of whatever the avenue was. I'm thinking it's somewhere around 16th or 17th. And as part of the approval, the board requested, and the applicant agreed, to have a, an access into the neighborhood, which could be gated at a certain, and locked at a certain point of time in the night. Are you, is your client opposed to that?
We are not opposed to it as a matter, as a matter of course for us. I would, if that would be a suggestion, I would like to go back to the neighborhood because I don't believe, and again, I can't speak for them, but I believe that's the opposite of what they want here. But from our client's perspective, if we want to put a little gate in that wall, I don't think we would be opposed to that.
Okay. I have a hand up on city laptop.
Hello, this is Jay Scheckman.
Hi, Jay.
Hi, Chair. Andrew, do you have a letter of support from the neighborhood?
We do. There's a letter of support from the Sailboat Bend Civic Association in there. We present it at their regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I figured. I just wanted to make, confirm that. I mean, I think that, you know, the neighborhood, if they, if they wanted another use for this, whether it be for pedestrians or vehicles, they likely would not have written a letter in support of this. So that's all I have to say.
What about the other two neighborhoods you mentioned?
We held our own meeting for them. They're not, it's not in this neighborhood. It's, one of them is across Broward Boulevard, the other one is across the waterway. They didn't hold a vote because it wasn't their neighborhood meeting, but they were, everyone at that meeting was also in support of this. There was nobody against.
Thank you. Coleman?
I just had a quick question. The south end of the vacation, it looks like there's two private lots, two private homes there. I assume that they have no objection to this and are supporting the vacation?
Correct. The private lot to the southwest is actually owned by the same owner, and the property to the southeast is a part of this application as well. They, they were signatory to this application.
You good, Coleman? Jackie?
Yeah, one more point. Andrew, if I decided I wanted to use that as a cut-through, where would it take me? In other words, what's, what's the destination that would cause somebody from another neighborhood wanting to use that street? Where does it go that wants, that everybody would want to open it up?
Single-family homes, townhouses, but there's our guilde...
Yeah, it's not like, it's not like there's a destination for everybody to want to use it, right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right, do we have any other, I don't see any other hands, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on item number one, PLN VAC 2006 0001?
Chair, we do not have anyone signed up to speak on this item.
Thank you, Tricia. Closing the public hearing, bringing it back to the board, Bridgette?
Would you want to make the staff report a part of the...
Yes, that's a good...
Adopt it? Yeah.
That's a good idea. Is it the desire of the board that the staff report become part of the record in this matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I see no hands and I hear no nays, so the motion is carried. All right, any motions, discussion?
Yes, I move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Mary, second by Jackie.
Mr. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Waymouth?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Furtig?
Yes.
And Chair Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number, thank you. Item number two, PLN VAC 2008 0001. Quasi-judicial, so disclosure, starting with John Bronco?
I spoke to applicant's attorney.
Coleman Pruitt?
I did a site visit, spoke to the applicant's attorney, and I think Ella sent us a letter earlier today.
Bill?
I spoke to applicant's attorney and did a site visit.
Mike?
I'm going to have to recuse myself on this one, Madam Chair, because of proximity of La Solas Company properties to the site that I am the president and a shareholder in the company. There may be an impact, and I don't need any potential conflicts, so I'm going to abstain to ensure a fair proceeding without any bias.
Okay, so I'm going to steal Dewayne's thunder and, and remind you to fill, file your voting conflict form?
I will be doing that for both this item and the next item as well. I'm going to step into the audience, and I don't know whether I need to come back up to recuse myself from item three as well. If somebody will let me know.
Okay. Jay?
I spoke with applicant's attorney.
Scott? I mean Jackie, sorry. I'm writing first names, and then I've got a last name.
No, no problem. Yeah, I'm, I spoke to the applicant's attorney and also site visit.
Okay. And I spoke to applicant's attorney, and I made a second visit. So Robert?
You keep forgetting.
And me, too.
Brad, oh geez, sorry. Brad? Brad?
I spoke to applicant's attorney.
Mary?
Yes, I also spoke with the applicant's attorney, visited the site, and received a letter from Mr. McTeague.
Terrific. Now you're up, Robert.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Board. Robert Lockery, on behalf of the applicant. There are two items that are closely related, item two and three on your agenda. If it's all right with the board, I'd like to present them as one presentation, understanding you may have to vote on two separate items.
That's an excellent idea, Robert.
All right, thank you very much. I will try to be as brief as I can. I'm going to go through a lot of slides quickly, and I can certainly go back to any of them. This is a request, let me get this on my screen. This is a request for a approval of a new hotel in La Solas at 10007. Right now, it's called the 10007 Hotel. It's a 132, 138-room hotel located just east of 10th Terrace, north of La Solas, and south of Second Street. This gives you an overview of the hotel itself. The developers of this project are local residents as well as developers, Steve Hudson and Charlie Ladd. To take a step back just for a minute, this is a part of a, of a larger improvements that they've been making in the area on properties that they own along La Solas. Here, you see the area in blue in the middle, and the hotel, which is on the left or west side of that property. To the right of that is a parking facility that was recently improved, that we'll, we'll show you all. South of that is property they own across the street, including the Etta Hotel, which was recently before the Planning and Zoning Board, and then further to the east, the block just east of 12th Avenue, 1201. This is a view of the project as it's already been constructed along La Solas at 1201. Here's a view of Etta, which is currently under construction. Demolition just began, I believe, last week, right next to property that La Solas is, La Solas Company is developing east of that as well. And then this is the landscaped area with surface parking, new sidewalks, additional street trees and lighting that is on the north side of La Solas. This is on the east side of 10th, just across the street from the hotel property. What you're seeing before you now is a graphic of the hotel property, which is outlined in yellow. The southern portion of the property is currently B1, commercial business, and the northern portion is XP. The request before you tonight in item two is a partial alley vacation, which will go essentially from the property line on the west side of the property out to 10th, with the caveat and condition that the applicant, the owner, needs to dedicate back to the city an access easement so that vehicular and pedestrian access continue through that alley once the project is complete. In addition, we're, we are rezoning the northern portion of the property up here, I've got another slide that shows that a little bit better, to CB, so from XP to CB. So the area in blue on the south side of this graphic, which is on the bottom, is, is portions of the site plan, the alley vacation, which runs through the middle of the site plan, and then the rezoning to the north with associated site plan. The, to walk you through a little bit of the specifics of what we're doing, here you see 10th Avenue with La Solas Boulevard on the south at the bottom, and Second Court on the north. The area on the right side has already been approved. All the building permits have, and construction permits have been issued, and they will begin work on that very soon. On the west side of 10th Terrace is the hotel structure. This is an aerial view looking down on it, of course, take you around the building, but a few things that we want to point out. Along southeast Second Court, the streetscape will be improved with a parquet area. This building itself will be set back significantly further than what's required along Second Court, new landscaping and lighting. As you turn the quarter and come down 10th Terrace, again, the building will be set back with a wide sidewalk, street trees and lighting, and then along La Solas, similarly, the building will include a wide sidewalk, street trees, keeping consistent with the street design that's already been adopted a little bit further to the east, and which will soon be coming to La Solas to have new shade trees along the Boulevard, as well as ground-floor retail, a second-story terrace, and then the building steps back at the upper floors, and the top floor steps back from La Solas, from Second Court, as well as from 10th Terrace. So that's kind of looking down on the site. Access to the site is from Second Court and from 10th Terrace. We've asked for a change to the alley configuration, which I'll get to at the end of my, at the end of my presentation. No vehicular access from La Solas. The current driveway that exists from La Solas will be closed. This is a view from the hotel looking to the northwest. Here, you see the wide sidewalks, the, the public realm, which is improved at the ground level, retail, which wraps the corner along La Solas and 10th, and then the outdoor terrace and dining up on the second floor, as well as you see the amenity for the hotel area, which is up at the top. One of the things I meant, forgot to mention, I should have done at the beginning, is all the parking is subgrade. That's another reason for the alley vacation, so there is no structured parking above grade. It's all underground in this location. Here's the alley. This is a view from the street level. Again, this is looking to the northwest. Again, the outdoor restaurant terrace on the second floor, ground-floor retail below that. The next view is, again, along La Solas, looking in the opposite direction. Now you're looking to the northeast, again, seeing the ground-floor retail, the restaurant above, and that's Anne's Florist that exists over to the left with the tower, with the hotel portion stepping back. Going to the north side of the building, which is against along 10th Terrace, I mean, Second Street, which is actually the main entrance to the hotel, here you see the wider sidewalks, the setback, as well as the, the plaza area, and of course, the improved, the, the architectural style, as well as the detailing that was very important to this development team. Here you see the surface parking lot across the street that's improved. I know that you all aren't reviewing the interior of the building, only the exterior, but we did want to go through some of the graphics that are being used by the interior designers for this hotel. This gives you an idea of the concepts that are being contemplated. This is portions of the exterior concepts, as well as interior spaces, lobby spaces, public areas within the hotel, as well as the concepts for the outdoor terrace, which would be up on the second floor. This is a view kind of from a drone or a little bit higher up, looking to the southwest. And again, you see here, it's obvious that there is no backside of this building. Along here, again, you have additional street lighting, landscaped areas, as well as the entrance to the hotel and the alley, which is maintained right at this location, the ground-floor retail, which is the left side, which comes around the corner. And this is the hotel lobby and public spaces up on the second floor, top floor steps back. I mentioned that we were asking for a modification to the alley, and I just want to walk through what that is. First of all, the alley will be improved in the sense it will be wider than it is now. Anybody who's been back behind Warby Parker and used that parking lot knows it's very tight, so it will be wider. The plans that are, today, let me just take a step back from that. The plan, today, if you use this alley, access along the alley is in one direction from the east to the west. The plans that are in your package show that being reversed, to go from west to east. In discussing the project with our immediate adjacent neighbor, actually, our only directly adjacent neighbor, the McTeague family, who own the property just to the west of the site, it was identified that having the, that switching the direction of the alley from what it is today would have a negative impact on surface parking that they access from the alley. As a result, this is the plan that you have, we've proposed a change to these plans to leave the alley, leaving, basically, essentially, still going from east to west as it does today, but improving it a little bit further at our end to widen it and allow two-way access for the hotel, and then, as I said, one-way access all the way through. I know I'm throwing a lot out, a lot of words. I can slow down and go through it with you. The important thing is, in looking at it, we actually think it does improve the situation significantly. We've discussed it with the city's transportation and mobility department, as well as the city's engineering department. They agree that the change is acceptable. So we've submitted it. It's not in your package, but we would ask that this be a condition of final DRC approval, that we make this change. And essentially, you now can... And essentially, you now could come into the alley from 10th Terrace so that you can access all the way from the east to the west, going in this direction, right to left. And then the hotel, also, it makes it easier to go to the elevators, which take the cars down to the subterranean parking, and also allows a way out. So it actually makes this space work a little bit better, as well as make the valet work a little bit easier and flow through a little bit easier. So that change has been submitted. Again, we will be making that change at final DRC approval. This is a view as you're looking down 10th Terrace, from the north to the south, down with the hotel on the right side and the improvements that are being made on the east side of 10th Terrace. The project has been presented both to the neighborhood leaders, as well as through the public participation process. We recognize that there is a letter of support from Mr. McTeague that was forwarded, hopefully, to you all today. We agree with all staff conditions with one additional caveat in addition to the alley, and we've talked to staff about this, and they agree. Condition five of your conditions on the site plan, which tie into a B-cycle location. We have agreed with the condition as it's written in your staff report with one exception, and that's the very last statement, which says that the improvement shall be made prior to building permit. We actually need the building permit to start to do the work that'll allow us to move it. So I think that makes sense to everybody, and we're still required to make that improvement before we start any construction on the street. But we will have to have permits to begin all that process. With that, we do believe we meet all the criteria for the right-of-way vacation, as well as for the site plan with associated rezoning. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Robert, does the site plan application require any variances or modifications from the ULDR?
It does not. Great question, it does not.
Okay, and would you please address neighborhood compatibility?
Certainly. So a couple of things that come into perspective with neighborhood compatibility. One is when you're directly adjacent or tied up directly to, for example, a single-family home. There are certain criteria that come into play. The other type of neighborhood compatibility, which applies here, is when you're separated by rights of way. And among the things that the city needs to look at are other structures that are permitted within this zoning district and what can be allowed. In this area, for example, we've got a mix of height. We know there's a lot of two-story buildings, but we also have five-story buildings, seven-story buildings, four stories, et cetera, within the vicinity. This project is actually lower in height than what's allowed by the code. So the code would allow up to 150 feet. We've provided 116 feet. We also think that by putting the parking underground, subterranean, that has a very positive effect on neighborhood compatibility. There is, in this case, no garage that you see from the street. The improvements that we are making, we think, are very compatible with what we see around us. We do note that the property directly to, so on either side of us, for example, particularly along La Solas, the zoning is higher, would allow higher than what we're doing. And then directly to our north, which is a multifamily district, that zoning allows up to 55 feet in height. Again, we're commercial, so it's anticipated that we would be higher than 55 feet. And we think at 116 feet, that's a good moderation from that height that would be allowed to our north. We will say that the owner of the property to the north, which is developing townhomes right now, we have presented the project with him and talked to him about it, and we got very favorable response.
Thank you, Robert. Let's see. I don't have, I don't see any board hands at the moment, so I'm going to ask, oh, I see Mary, Mary Firdig.
I was going to move that we make the staff report part of the record, if that's okay.
That's a great idea.
If we can get clarification, since the applicant requested that you review both items.
Yes. I was gonna, both items. I was gonna make the staff report part of the record.
Item number PLN-VAC-2008-001. Mary, are you moving that that staff report be part of the record?
I am.
Jackie, are you seconding that?
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing no nays, motion carries. Item number?
Chair, if I can also get a clarification from, or put on the record, rather, for the board that their disclosures for item two are also applicable to item three as well? If anyone has any additional disclosures, if you would make it at this time?
Thank you, Dewayne. Is there any board member who has a different disclosure for item number three than item number two? Would you please raise your hand or wave in the box? I see no hands. So, board, is it everyone's belief that they have the same disclosures for item number three that they had for item number two? Yes?
Yes.
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 Anyone saying no? Okay. Another cleanup item. I believe Tricia has a correction.
Yes, just a small correction on the vacation staff report. Under the general location, it should say north of La Solas Boulevard, rather than Broward Boulevard. And just to state that staff does agree with the adjustment to condition number five, as Robert described.
Thank you, Tricia. And with regards to item number three, PLN-Site-2008-001, is it the desire of the board to include the staff report in as part of the record? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing no one, motion is passed. So I don't have any hands raised, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on either item number two, the vacation, or item number three, the site plan and rezoning?
Madam Chair, this is Yvonne Redding, Urban Design and Planning. We have Viorica Niyaku here in chambers, wishing to speak on item three.
Terrific.
And she has been sworn in.
Great, thank you.
Could I please ask that she spell her name for me? Thank you.
And Bridgette, I do have the sign-in sheet she filled out.
Hello, everyone. My name is Viorica Neagu. I'm a resident of Villaggio di La Solas. And I'm concerned, because I didn't have enough information, and this is why I'm here, to find out as many details as possible regarding this hotel. Because I don't know how is it gonna impact our neighborhood, especially the water pressure that we might already have problems with, the traffic on La Solas, and most importantly, the traffic on the north side, Second Street, which is actually the street that we have access to our garage. And there are so many other concerns that I might have, but this is why I'm here, to find out as many informations as possible.
So ma'am, with regards to water pressure, they have been issued a letter stating that they meet the requirements of adequacy. So the city believes that they are not going to cause undue pressure on the water pressure. Robert, was there a traffic report done in this matter?
There was. So a traffic report was done doing the analysis of the additional trips that are generated by the hotel portion. It was approved by the city as meeting all the requirements without any other additional traffic improvements. I do want to say, though, there is one additional item that I didn't mention, which is although water capacity and water pressure was determined to be sufficient on the street, we are being requested, and it's part of your staff report, so we've agreed to do it, to make sewer improvements from our site on southeast 10th, all the way down, basically, another block and a half further to the north, to make a connection into another main. So we will be making off-site sewer improvements that will benefit other properties in this area, including the Villaggio, at our cost and expense, to tie into the new work that the city's doing as well in that area.
Thank you. Ma'am, those are, that is as much as I can glean for you on your individual concerns. I'm sure that Robert would be happy to talk to you about any further concerns you have as the project goes along. Am I correct in saying that, Robert?
Yes, absolutely. And we have been in touch with some of your neighbors, so I will certainly, if you leave your information with the city, I can get to it. As part of the project that we're doing on the east side of 10th Terrace, which is closer to you, we also, not to bore the P&amp;Z members, but we understand that right now, that accessway you have kind of back behind where Asia Bay is kind of a mess. So Charlie has said he would like to work with you all to improve that for you while he's doing his improvement. So happy to talk to you about that, as well as the hotel.
Yeah, I will definitely would like to meet and talk to you because the hotel is totally blocking my view to the west. When I moved over there, I picked to live in this building, and especially this particular apartment, because it has a full view to the skyline of the city. So it's totally blocking my marvelous view that I'm having breakfast and enjoy my life there.
All right, well, view, a viewpoint is not something that really comes before the city. You know, I'm sure that there were many homes and businesses that had a view before Villaggio went up. So if you have further concerns, I would just suggest you stay in touch with staff and with Mr. Lockery.
Okay, I would be happy to get their information and touch base as the project will go along. I would like to know when it starts, how long it will take, and...
Mr. Lockery can help you with all of that.
Okay, I will appreciate it.
Yes, and they have my information at City Hall, so I'm sorry I'm not there with you tonight, but they can get it for you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wishing to speak on this item? All right, I have no hands raised. Mary Firdig.
Okay, I'm gonna move to approve. We're gonna take these separately. Mr. Spence, is that correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, so I'm going to approve the vacation, the partial vacation of the alley. That's number two, I believe, on the agenda.
I'll second that.
With staff conditions.
Motion by Mary, second by Brad.
Is that including that alley improvement to do with McTeague's property?
Yes.
With staff conditions and with the applicant's petition.
Yes, yes.
All right, Bridgette.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Firdig?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Yes.
Chair Moss?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Item number three, is there a motion or discussion?
Move to approve with staff condition, including the amended condition, number five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jay, I think.
Correct.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Firdig?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Chair Moss?
No. Thank you very much. Item carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number four, UDP-S2002. It is quasi-judicial. I'm gonna ask for disclosures, starting with Coleman Pruitt.
I spoke to counsel for the applicant.
Thank you, Coleman. Bill?
I spoke to counsel for the applicant and did a site visit.
Mike?
I spoke to the applicant's counsel.
Jay?
I spoke with applicant's counsel.
Brad?
I spoke with applicant's counsel.
Mary?
I spoke with the applicant's counsel, and I visited the site. Thank you.
Jackie?
Or the applicant's counsel?
John? John Bronco?
Sorry, I was not unmuted. I spoke to applicant's counsel and did visit the site.
Okay. I spoke to applicant's counsel, and I visited the site. Nectaria?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nectaria Chakas, for the record, with the firm Lockery &amp; Chakas, on behalf of the applicant. We are here for a parking reduction request, which, if granted, would allow us to terminate an old parking agreement, off-site parking agreement that was recorded back in 1991. I'm gonna share my screen, just so I can show you how or why we're here and how we got here. Let's see here. All right. You should be able to see my screen now. If you can't, you know, let me know.
We see it.
Okay, great. So this is, the parcel that we're here for today is the red parcel. There is an existing restaurant located on this parcel. is an existing restaurant located on this parcel. It's a 1,750 square foot restaurant. The name of it is Just One More Tavern, I believe. Um, this, it's an old building. It takes up almost the entire site. It has no parking on site. It has historically been used for some sort of food service establishment, like a takeout establishment, which is parked at retail. But back in 1991, they decided that they were going to convert to a sit-down restaurant. And when you convert from a takeout restaurant to a sit-down restaurant, that triggers having to meet more parking. And because this restaurant has no parking or this building has no parking available on site, they had to show the city how they were able to provide those extra spaces. And the way they did that was by executing an off-site parking agreement and entering into an arrangement with the owner of this parcel down here that's in blue. And they arranged to have this off-site parking agreement. It's an old agreement that frankly, I don't think anybody knew was out there. And it wasn't really discovered until a title search was done by the developer of the Publix, who is slated to purchase this parcel in blue. And it's the site, obviously, of the new Publix. And so Publix wants the, the parking agreement to be terminated, and we believe there is a basis to go ahead and terminate that now because the circumstances and the character of the neighborhood has changed since that parking agreement was originally entered into. And one of the things that has changed is obviously the construction of the parking garage, the Bridge Side Place parking garage where the Tides condominium is located. There's 504 parking spaces. That was constructed, this garage was constructed in, I would say, early 2000s, mid 2000s. So it was about 10 years after this off-site parking agreement was entered into. Had this parking garage been there at the time, it probably would have been done this way to begin with. But it wasn't there, and so they arranged for this off-site parking arrangement between the red parcel and this blue parcel down here. So we are, what we're proposing to do now is seek the parking reduction, 100% parking reduction for the 15 spaces that are required under code for this restaurant. And under the, under the city's ULDR, you're allowed to request a parking reduction. And one of the criteria is that you demonstrate that there is sufficient parking, public parking within 700 feet of the use, and that the additional parking that's required will not impact the availability of that public parking. And we've submitted a traffic or a, sorry, a parking study that was prepared by DC engineers. That study has been reviewed. The parking garage, the Bridge Side Place parking garage is grossly underutilized. I've spoke to the Tides president. They actually get a cut of the revenue that the city generates from this garage. And he said that, you know, the parking garage is just completely underutilized. The only time it's ever filled up is for the boat parade. And, you know, it's once-a-year thing. So there's plenty of parking available in this parking garage. So we are seeking to go ahead and have the parking reduction approved. And then thereafter, we will be able to terminate the off-site parking agreement. That basically sums up the reason why we're here. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. We did, just so you know, we did present this to the Central Beach Alliance. I also had a public participation meeting. The Central Beach Alliance is in support of it. We have a letter of support that's included in the backup materials and staff report that you should have in front of you. And then also had a, as I said, a conversation with the Tides condominium, and they were in support of it, as well as Berkeley South, which is this condominium right here. They were also supportive. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Nectaria, when you said you had conversations with those two condominiums, did you have meetings with them?
No, they didn't actually find it necessary to have individual meetings with them. But we had our own public participation meeting. We sent out, it was over 600 notices, and there were only five people that attended our public participation meeting. So we had individual, an individual meeting with members of the board of the Berkeley South. And I spoke to the president and the management company for the Tides. And both had no objections. They had no issues with it. Like I said, the Tides actually is a win-win for them because they get a cut of the revenue that's generated in that garage. And they just said it's just completely underutilized. It's never full. There's tons of parking available in there.
Okay, thank you very much. Is it the desire of the board that the staff report for item number four, UDP S two triple zero two, be included as part of the record?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Coleman. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. I'd like to open the public hearing on this item. Is there any member of the public wishing to speak on item number four, UDP S two triple zero two?
Chair, we have one person signed up to speak. His name is, oh, he's been moved to a panelist. His name is Steve.
Are you there, Steve?
Sorry.
Steve?
Hold on.
Not this Steve.
He's
Steve, if you could please unmute.
Looking for Steve, who wants to talk on item number four?
It's like his last name is Gannon.
Steve Gannon, are you there? Unmute. Looking for Steve Gannon. Unmute. All right, we've got a few more minutes. All right. Tricia, is there any other member of the public wishing?
I'm sorry, Chair. Steve is now unmuted.
Yeah, thanks a lot. You changed the presenter. I was able to unmute. Thanks again. Briefly, I'm Steve Gannon, President Lauderdale Beach Homeowners Association, the neighborhood homes, 120 homes and 80 condos that are east of A1A from the project. And we are aware of this. We attended one of, one of Nectaria's meetings. And our, our neighborhood is in favor of the parking reduction. We're in favor of the Publix, and something as small as this is not going to change our mind about the Publix. So we're in favor. That's all I wanted to say briefly.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Tricia, any other member of the public?
No, we don't have anyone else signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, just, I have no hands up. So is there any discussion, any motions?
Move to
Madam Chair, we have a resolution, resolutions associated with this. So it would be introduction of a resolution to deny or approve.
Sure.
Move the resolution to approve.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second to Catherine.
Thank you, Coleman. We're ready, Bridget.
I'll go ahead and read that. A resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a parking reduction for an existing restaurant located at 3074.
Dwayne, you're cutting out. I can't hear you. I don't know about anybody else.
No, I can't either.
Dame, I can't hear that.
Dwayne, we can't
Yes.
Oh, there you are.
You can hear me now, or?
Yes.
Okay, great. A resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a parking reduction for an existing restaurant located at 3074 Northeast 33rd Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, case number UDP dash S two zero 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 two.
Thank you.
Okay.
We are ready.
Yes, I am ready. Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Weymouth?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Chair Moss?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Item carries. Thank you. Thank you, Nectaria. Item number five, PLN Site 2009 double zero thirteen. This is quasi judicial, so I am going to ask for disclosures, starting with Bill Rotella.
Spoke with applicant's attorney and did a site visit.
Mike?
Site visit and spoke to the applicant's attorney.
Jay?
I spoke with the applicant's attorney.
Brad?
Sorry, I have trouble hitting that button. I spoke with applicant's attorney.
Mary?
I visited the site.
Jackie?
Visited the site and spoke to the applicant's attorney.
John?
Spoke with applicant's attorney.
Coleman?
I visited the site and spoke with the applicant's attorney.
And I visited the site and spoke to applicant's attorney. All right. Steve, you're up. Mr. Tilbrook?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd like to share my screen.
Sure.
All right. I'm going to show, do the presentation mode. There we go. All right. So I'm going to make a brief presentation, try to make it quick. I know it's late this evening. First Presbyterian Church of Fort Lauderdale is the applicant. This is a rezoning from community facility, house of worship to CB for a small point two seven four acre site. I'll show you the site location. Because it is, includes the allocation of, an allocation of, of commercial flexibility, also requires a site plan level four. I'm going to jump right to the map of the area. This is the site. It is 150 feet south of Los Olas Boulevard and on Tarpon Drive. It's a small triangle site. It's part of the First Presbyterian Church campus. I'm going to outline for you the campus location. The campus boundary is, goes along Los Olas Boulevard for 430 feet. Oops, let me go back up. 430 feet down to the alley along this and crosses 15th Avenue, includes some parking lots east of 15th Avenue. Did it again. And then over to Fourth on, and then around this area, all of this is included up to here and then back. So this is the First Presbyterian Church campus. Most of the parking is located east of, of the sanctuary. This is a sanctuary building. This is the Christian Education Building. This is a satellite parking lot. It's been used as a parking lot for many, many years. Going to give you a little bit more information on the church, flip back up to this slide. The church was established in 1912. It's one of the oldest churches in Fort Lauderdale. It relocated to the Colehamake neighborhood in 1942. It's an original member of Colehamake in many respects. It's a, has a vital and growing congregation. The, there have been a few plans over the years regarding the potential expansion to include a family center. There was a site plan approved for a family center on Los Olas Boulevard back in 2012. It's a tough project to get approved. It didn't end up getting built. Changes, the church has changed its focus and growth patterns over time. That site plan expired. It was a, it was a site plan that, part of it actually expired at that time. And then there was a rezoning of this particular parcel to, to the CFH zoning category in 2015 to implement a family campus project that was south of the alley, which I'll show you that location in a second. The family campus was constructed in 2016. And, and there was a DRC approval for this particular parking lot in 2020. So the family campus is this block right here, south of the alley bordered by 15th and Fourth, 15th and Tarpon and Fourth. That's, so this whole block was rezoned to CFH at that time. This is another view of the parcel. It's got, it traditionally had 25 parking spaces. These are some photos of it, of the reconstructed parking area. It's been completed, but it's not been opened because after we made the improvements, the city interpreted that the CFH zoning was not appropriate to permit public parking. So now we're here to rezone to a zoning category that will permit public parking. This is the rest of the parking lot that is fronting on Los Olas Boulevard. I'll show you that site plan in a moment. That's been completed and is, is functioning and operating as a church parking lot that also accommodates public parking through a city metered system. This is the small triangle lot that we're talking about. This is the legal description of the area to be rezoned. This is the, the survey showing that, the way that the parking lot used to be oriented. It had like a loop through it. It was non-conforming in many, many different ways. And had no, no drainage, no lighting. And it, it just, it, it functioned and provided about 25 parking spaces, but really wasn't, didn't meet city code. This is the site plan that was approved in 2019 for the larger parking lot. This was through DRC level approval, included public outreach and public meetings. This has been constructed in accordance with the DRC approval. And this is the portion that is subject to review today. This has been constructed as, as well. It's, construction is complete, but this requires rezoning in order to allow for the public to park there. The practical difficulty is the location of this parking lot, you really can't manage this lot without a metered operating system. It's just not possible to manage it. The public is used to parking in this area. There's a shortage of parking in this area. And we have to put up chains and gates in order to keep people out. The metered parking system will allow us to manage it. So it's used for church purposes when the church is using it and may be available to the public at other times. This is the existing zoning map. It shows the CFH zoning in this area right now. The rest of the church campus, part of it is CFH, part of it is CFHS. It also accommodates Happy Land Day School, so it has CFHS. And this is the parcel we're talking about. It would be rezoned to CB. Community business is the, is a zoning category that permits public parking and also can be accommodated with the underlying land use through an allocation of commercial flexibility. The criteria for rezoning are set forth in your code. I'm not going to go through them. The, the staff memo goes through them very well, includes adequacy, neighborhood compatibility, and the allocation of flex. There's a total of point two seven acres of flex that is to be allocated. Interestingly, for this parcel, it had previously received an allocation of flex when the family center project was approved because it was to be built as a commercial parking lot. And when that site plan approval expired, that allocation of flex expired as well. So this is like a reallocation of flex that had previously been allocated. Public outreach, we have had several meetings with, with the community as related to this parking lot and this rezoning, as related to the rezoning. There was a DRC meeting in October 2020, and also notice according to that, and public participation meeting regarding the rezoning on November 13 via Zoom. There was no one that participated in that meeting. We've since then had several conversations with the Colehamake Homeowners Association. We have a letter of support or email of approval from Jerry Jordan, who is the president, current president of the Colehamake Homeowners Association. That's our presentation. We're here to answer any questions. I, and there is also other members of the church that are available. Unfortunately, tonight was Ash Wednesday service at church, so most of our members were there. They couldn't pack the meeting tonight. Just kidding. And we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is it the desire of the board that the staff report for item number five, PLN Site two double zero nine double zero thirteen be made part of the record?
Yes.
Jackie, second?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I hear no nays and I see no nays. So the motion carries. Mary?
I, I just had a quick question. Was this the only zoning category that you could rezone to that allowed parking?
There is another zoning category, the XP zoning, that, that could also allow parking. We reviewed those two options with staff and with the church and with the neighborhood. And it, it was the applicant's opinion and preference that the CB provides additional flexibility in the event that the site is prepared for redevelopment in the future. This parking lot is not a long-term use. It's really an interim use. And CB zoning would accommodate redevelopment in the future if, if that becomes appropriate.
Can you put that zoning map back up of the different zonings in the area? So this would really be, this parcel, that's very small on my screen. So this would just be a tiny part of, oh, no, you have the rest of it that's CB. Is that the green there that the line's drawn to?
This is, oh, boy, that is an X.
Oh, that's the existing. And you've got what you would be going to if you could just go to that
There we go.
That picture.
That's what we're going to, yes.
So, so it's kind of right, it, it's CB, right in the middle of a whole bunch of other things that are zoned, other things. Is that?
Yes, those are primarily CF zonings. This is the Episcopalian Church, and this is the Presbyterian Church. This is a mixed-use project at this location, and this is the B1 zoning.
Okay. Okay, that answers my questions. Thank you very much.
Um, let's see, I think, Jackie?
Yeah, I've got a question. Steve, you were saying that the parking lot is used for the church and for
Is that a question?
Yeah, yeah. You were talking about, you were, you were referring to this parking lot as being used for the church.
Yes.
That comment, so.
So the, this parking lot, the larger parking, I'll, I'll actually go to the site plan if I can get there. The site plan was, this, this part of the site plan is in the B1.
Right.
This part is in the CF.
Right.
This parking lot has been used by the church as a church parking lot for a long, long time. It's been used as, as an exclusive church parking, I shouldn't say exclusive. It's been used for church parking primarily for many years. It was originally developed, this parking lot was originally developed to accommodate the commercial development that occurred at this location. This was historically a hotel, and this was the only parking for that hotel.
Okay.
After the hotel was, was changed to a retired home, this was, parking was for that. Now, we redeveloped it and brought it into compliance as a church parking lot to accommodate the church services.
Okay, so here's
But church, church services are not seven days a week and primarily not during the weekday. And we have traditionally made this parking available for public use when it's not used for churches.
Okay, so my point is, this triangle that's right here, two years ago, asked to parking was charging and it was used as a commercial lot. Now you're saying it's also used as the church. So my question is, anybody going to your church has to pay for parking?
Well, we, we have an arrangement with the city of Fort Lauderdale, an agreement with the city of Fort Lauderdale that this, this would be added to that agreement. And this parking lot is not charged for parking during church services. It is parking for church purposes during church services.
So when is that? I want to know when we can go park there for free.
Well, if you're coming to church, Jackie, you can park there for free. So
Who said that?
I, so the agreement that we have with the city provides for church, anytime it's used for church parking, we provide notice to the city and they don't provide enforcement during that period of time.
Well, just tell me when that is.
We haven't been, we haven't had church services for over a year in person, so.
Okay, so it's pretty much, okay. Okay, no problem.
All right, so I, I think that if this were a rezoning to XP, I'd be okay with it. But rezoning to CB with the amount of property that the church owns in that area and the number of rezonings that have happened. and the number of rezonings that have happened and the expansion plans that have come forward over the years makes me uncomfortable. So, just speaking for myself. Do we have any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? I don't see any hands. Did, oh, I do see hands. City Laptop?
Yes, Chair, this is Jay. I was just curious what, you know, because I'm interested, I'm hearing all the opinions here. What is, what, what makes you uncomfortable exactly? Like, what is, what is your concern?
So, Jay, for many years, the church had some aggressive plans for what was essentially a neighborhood, and over the years, the church has bought up quite a few properties, residential properties in that neighborhood, has rezoned them, has, you know, created a number of parking So that's kind of where I come from.
May I respond?
Wouldn't the...
So there's really no need to respond to that. Okay?
Yeah, no, I just, I, I just thought if the concern is that it's a parking lot, that the benefit of CB would be that it could then be changed to another use in the future.
Exactly. Jackie, your hand is up. Is that old?
No, no, I was just, I, I kind of agree with you. I mean, I would be much more comfortable if they would rezone it to XP because it would accomplish what they want to accomplish, and in the future, if they do develop, you know, they'll come back with a site plan and go through the process again. This is kind of like just carte blanche by doing it to CB.
Agree. Mary?
Yeah, I asked a question about zoning because I was looking at the existing zoning versus the proposed zoning. The existing, you have a maximum building height of 35 feet, the proposed 150 feet. There are, there are significant differences between the existing and the proposed, and if this were an entire parcel that was going to then have all of the same zoning, that's one thing, but this is kind of a triangle in the midst of something else that is going to not be necessarily consistent with what's around it. Those are my two concerns. One, that this gives, the entitlements with CB are much greater than the SF-H, and, and I'm just, I'm still unclear why they didn't proceed with XP if the intent was for parking.
Okay. Is there, Jackie, is your hand up again?
It is, I'm sorry. I didn't want to interrupt, I just thought I'd use my hand. So, if, if we voted against this tonight, would they still have the ability to come back and ask for XP?
It's a question for staff.
Right.
Adam?
This is it.
It's, it's more of a question for DeWayne.
DeWayne Spence, Assistant City Attorney, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. The, our code provides that the Planning and Zoning Board, if it determines that the zoning doesn't meet the criteria, can deny it, or they can see if the applicant will at this meeting consent to a more restrictive zoning district. If they do not consent to rezoning it to a more restrictive zoning district, then you will have a denial, at which point their recourse is to appeal to the City Commission.
Okay.
So let's ask, let's, let's ask Mr. Tilbrook about changing his option to XP versus CB. Because really, if you get CB on this, you don't even have to come to us, you can build whatever you want in the future. If you use XP, you accomplish your goal.
Please, just allow me, allow me just to take a step back, okay? We've been working through this literally for years, okay, for this parking lot. It's been a couple of years. So we, and this is, this is the first time that the neighborhood has asked, and it's not really the neighborhood, the neighborhood is supporting the CB zone. This is the first time we've had a request to consider the CF. We have considered, we've asked the neighborhood, let me, let me finish, please. We've asked the neighborhood, there was, what the preference was, is it CB, is it CF? We've gone down a long road, okay, to get to CB. We think it's the, the best zoning for the flexibility for the future. I don't think it's accurate that we're not going to be coming back. First of all, the church does not have plans for expansion, okay? In the past, there were plans, 10, 12 years ago, I reviewed those plans with you, those plans were approved, they weren't built. There have not been any new parking lots created in this area in many, many years. This, this, the parking for the church has always been located east of, of the church. There was a grass parking lot in this area that we converted into a family campus. And what that means is, it is, and I'm a member of the church as well as their lawyer, so, and I've been involved in this for some time, so I speak from a little bit of experience. This family campus accommodates parking, can accommodate parking, but it's really built as a recreational space, but because it's a church, you can, you can park on the grass, which, which is what they've done, we've done there for many years. This parking lot's been used for parking for many years. There is no plan to do something, anything different. I mean, I've communicated to Jackie and to others who've asked, that the church has considered in the past of making this property available, this property along Los Olas available for commercial development, not for church use. And, and whether or not this parcel could be part of that is a question. You know, it's my personal opinion that, that if we're going to rezone, we might as well rezone to CB and create the most flexibility. But if the board prefers something different, you know, I'm not, I don't think the church, I don't have the church with me right now, they're actually worshiping right now for Ash Wednesday. I don't know whether they would withdraw the application, but I think they would prefer to have it go forward in any event after the long, hard road that we've gone down. I don't know if that answers your question, but...
But XP wouldn't hurt you. It would give you exactly what you want.
Look, our application is for CB. That's the process we've gone down for the last year. If the board wants to go down a different road, we're not going to say no, we'd rather have it keep going.
So may I jump in? Under the criteria for rezoning, I note that item number two, number two is the changes anticipated by the proposed rezoning will not adversely impact the character of development in or near the area under consideration. And Steve, you said that a rezoning to CB would serve, possibly serve the church in the future if it changes its mind. In other words, if it redevelops the property. So I, I am conflicted in supporting a rezoning to CB because whatever you have down the road planned may adversely impact the character of the development in or near the area. We don't know. And number three also says the character of the area proposed is suitable for the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district. Well, the character of the area is, you know, highly specific and historic, and CB is not necessarily the best zoning category for that area. So the church being able to accomplish what it wants with XP, you know, gives me pause for a rezoning to CB. We have other hands. City Laptop, again?
I also, I would like to just read into the record the staff report as related to criteria two, which says the uses permitted within the CB zoning district are in alignment with the adjacent B1 zoning district and would have, would not have an adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood. That is in your staff report. That's part of the record.
Thank you, Steve. Let's see, City Laptop?
It's Mike Weymouth. Steve, as you know, we, we, I approached this with you when you called me and I questioned the CB. I mean, I'm sorry, I questioned the XP. And the reason I did, and now in the wake of items two and three of tonight's agenda, I, I, the, the lot that has now been converted is going to be a hotel. I put in as XP from RM25 back in the day to get parking. I think that displays the pathway that the church could pursue in the future, that if they ever wanted to redevelop that whole site with the front of John Los Olas, which I wish you would do, and I told you as well. I think at that time, if you were to get an XP zoning on this, at that time, you could come back and lobby for a more aggressive zoning. What I would suggest, and it's only a suggestion, is that maybe somehow we get you a 30-day holdover until the March meeting. You have a chance to go back and talk to your church folk and say, look, we can get to XP in March, but otherwise, I'm not sure exactly what the fallout is from this, but...
To answer your question, we have been through this with the church. The church can live with XP. The church can live with XP. We don't think it's the right zoning for the future redevelopment here. We don't, this parcel has been rezoned three times in the last 10 years, 12 years. To have to go back and do it again is silly, okay? Let's look to the future, let's zone for the future. If the board feels that they don't want to look so far into the future to, to grant CB, and by the way, the church is not going to be redeveloping this property, it may be someone else, but the church has no plans for the redevelopment of this property. But we can live with XP if that's the board's desire, you know, this is, we've had some extensive discussions over the last, you know, couple of years on this, so to go back to XP at this point is kind of, you know, defeatist from our perspective, but we can live with it.
Mary?
I was going to say something similar, but not as well as what Mike just said. So I, I was going to say the same thing, and it's, and when you look at all those parcels around it, if you were rezoning, you would have to rezone those to do it. So I, I really think XP is the, is the proper way to go, and if Mike's making a motion to defer, I would second it, so...
We would prefer to go to XP tonight rather than...
Oh, okay. Well, okay, I'm going to make that motion, and, and let's just see where we are instead of continuing to talk around it.
Well, Mary...
Can I do that?
Well, let's ask staff if we can change midstream to rezone to XP.
They said we could.
DeWayne? Adam?
Yes.
Chair, that, that is correct. You are, you are permitted to go to a more restrictive zoning classification.
Okay, terrific. And Stephen, I understood that you said that you were in agreement with that.
We will accept that if that is the board's desire.
All right. Mary, your hand is still up.
Oh, sorry. So I'm going to make that, but I'll just do this, I'll make the motion to, to open the public hearing.
Oh, yes, I would.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that, everybody.
No, it's my apology. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on item number five, which is PLN Site 2009013?
We didn't have anyone sign up in advance, but we do have Stephen Williams with his hand raised as an attendee.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
We will unmute him now, just give him a couple of seconds.
Sure.
Stephen, could you unmute yourself? He's still muted.
Mr. Williams, unmute yourself. Are you there, Mr. Williams? You need to tap unmute or mute.
Doesn't look like he's unmuting himself.
Okay, Mr. Williams, last time, we can't hear you. If you're here, please tap your mute button so that it says you are unmuted and speak to us. All right, hearing nothing from Mr. Williams, I'm going to go to John Bronco. John?
Yeah, I'm having the same problem. Hey, so, and this is more of a question for staff. I haven't done an XP zoning in a while, but the last time I did one, I remember there was a lot of, like, strings attached to it, and it, I think it goes along site, it's tied to another site, so there's, there's all kinds of impositions and requirements there. How do we address that? It, it just seems to me that it's not as simple as saying, yeah, let's just switch it to XP. Could you explain that to me and how we go about doing that?
If you can elaborate what, what the potential issues would be with the XP aspect of things, if you rezoned it to XP, it would just be limited to parking rather than a litany of uses that would be permitted to be constructed on-site. I'm not sure of the barriers that would exist by converting the, the site to XP.
There's, there, there are a bunch of prerequisites, if I remember. It, it had to be tied to a development, so...
Yes, it has to be in proximity to another site, so it will have to be tied to...
So which development are we tying into?
It would, that would be up to the applicant, but most likely Pespa Darian Church is a budding site.
Okay.
I just got blacked out.
And then there were other, there were other requirements in the XP too, and again, I apologize, I don't remember them all. I'm that guy. I know there's stuff that's required beyond just a rezoning, and that's why I'm asking...
That's quite fine, I can, I can most definitely look them up as we discuss this, just to make sure there's no barriers in place to rezoning it to XP.
Does anybody else have a blank screen?
Jackie, I can see you.
No.
Oh, my screen is totally black, weird.
I can see you, Jackie.
Just add one thing to it, you know, we, we just went through, and not to talk about other applications, but this church, I've seen the history too, you guys have brought it up. I don't know what it is with this church and, you know, why people don't want to see them succeed, or I, I don't get it, but when I see folks who have made an effort and are such great leaders in our community, I've been to that church to fill Thanksgiving basket for a few years with my wife through Rotary. They do an amazing job over there, great people. I just, you know, the community business isn't really going to open a door for a mega development on that site if it ever does happen. I just think we push along so many developments, and for whatever reason, with this church, it's always a sticking point. And it, it just, it flies in the face of everything else we do, and I don't get it.
John, do you know how much property the church owns in that area?
No, I don't. And I, I don't ask people that question when they come before us and develop things. I know Los Olas, Los Olas Company owns half of Los Olas, but, you know, they're doing a great job down there, and they're developing property and bringing great people to the city of Fort Lauderdale, and I don't know why we would think the church would be any different.
Can I say something, Catherine?
Can I, can I say something?
Jackie first, then Mary.
The, the thing is, is that the church came into a residential neighborhood and bought up tons of land, tons of residential, converted the zoning. They're not bad people, but, you know, over the years, it's become an issue, and there's been things that have been proposed that have been, you know, made a lot of people upset. The point, the point I've got, though, that's water under the bridge. The way I feel about it is that I want to support them in this endeavor, and I'm happy to vote in favor of this with XP zoning, but I will not support CB zoning.
Mary?
And I just want to say, the church is tremendously successful, and I know we have several members on, and they do so much for our community. And my, and my thought in doing this XP is that that's really the appropriate zoning category for the use that they're asking for, and that there's so much that would have to be rezoned anyways if it's ever developed in the future, that that's really the appropriate time to do it. But, you know, I, I commend the church for the outreach they do in this community and for all that they provide to our community in the way of, of services. And so with that, I'm going to move to approve XP zoning on this site, just to see where we end up.
And I'd like to second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Adam, just a, a response to John?
I don't see any barriers to XP at this particular time.
Okay. Okay. I have one more comment, Catherine, if I could. We just approved the 10-story hotel on CB zoning. Okay? I really like the idea of this being XP. All right, any other discussion on the motion? I only have Mary's hand up. Mary, is that a mistake? Okay. I have no other hands and I see nobody waving at me from chambers. So Bridgette, we're ready.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
An unenthusiastic yes.
Okay, I'll mark that. And then Mr. Waymoth?
I'll go with an unenthusiastic yes as well.
Okay. And Chair Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Tilbrook.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Item number five, communication to the City Commission. Anyone, anything?
Yes, staff has a presentation, Glenn Hadwin. If you want to go ahead and start sharing the screen. And Chair, if I may, while Glenn is presenting, we would also like to talk to you about setting a special meeting to review these landscape revisions at some point in March. So right before he gets started, if I could just put out there the three dates of Monday, March 8th, between 6:00 and 9:00 p.m., March 29th, which is another Monday, between 6:00 and 9:00 p.m., and March 30th, between 6:00 and 9:00 p.m. And that's maybe something we could talk about after the presentation. So again, those dates were 3/8, 3/29, and 3/30. Thank you.
Thank you, Ella. Glenn?
Chair, will we be doing for the good of the city after this presentation?
I'm sorry, Jay?
I'm just looking at the agenda and it says for the good of the cities before this presentation. So I'm just asking if we will be doing that after the presentation now.
Yes, that's when it's scheduled.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're ready, you're good, Glenn.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving us a few minutes. We wanted to briefly introduce the proposed revisions to Section 4721 of the ULDR Landscape and Tree Preservation Ordinance. As Ella mentioned, we are hoping to bring this to you in March. My name is Glenn Hadwin. I'm the Sustainability Manager in the Public Works Department Sustainability Division. I'm overseeing this effort with Kimberly Pearson, who's their technical lead on this effort. And she's the Sustainability Coordinator, also in the Public Works Sustainability Divisions. As you're aware, these revisions are changes to the ULDR, and therefore the changes require PCB review before it's sent to commission. As you will see, we have done significant outreach and advantaged tremendous feedback with many stakeholders interested in this effort. We expect that when you fully hear this, there will be a significant amount of public comments at the time of your official review next month. This evening, we just wanted to give you a brief overview of the proposed provisions to ULDR Section 4721 to illustrate our outreach activity, our process, and to select a March meeting date to officially present this to you. So next slide, please, Kim. You may remember that the last major revision of the Landscape and Tree Preservation Section of the ULDR was in February 2015. In 2019, the City Commission directed staff to review the city's code and to address urban forestry concerns in a comprehensive way with the goal of having a more streamlined and consistent application of the regulations while strengthening tree preservation as a whole. This direction is consistent with the city's press play strategic plan, containing objectives to grow and enhance the urban forest, to improve water quality and our natural environment. I will now turn the presentation over to Kimberly Pearson to provide an overview of the process and the proposed changes to the code document. So Kimberly, please go ahead.
Thanks, Glenn, and good evening, everyone. Thank you again for having us here. As Glenn just stated, the City Commission requested an ordinance modification to address the preservation of specimen old growth trees and the application on the city's existing tree preservation code in terms of approval of tree removal during development and during construction. To move in the comprehensive and collaborative direction as requested by commission, staff has shared 28 presentations and meetings with different stakeholder groups since June 2020 last year, so roughly the past eight months. Some of the dates above have included either a presentation by staff to share the newly created language, to update a stakeholder group of the progress and gather additional feedback, or maybe a separate meeting has been scheduled to review specific comments shared, perhaps a one-on-one meeting or with a small group of people. This slide illustrates our 31 total stakeholder group. As Glenn mentioned, we have had a significant amount of interest, which is wonderful to hear because we have gotten some fantastic comments and great perspectives to be able to update and move this for, move this document forward. Each stakeholder was given the opportunity to participate in this effort through the exchange of ideas, sharing perspectives and experiences, each working collaboratively in the creation of updated language to resolve conflicts in the maintenance of tree canopy, in the planting of new trees, in the application of codes related to the removal of trees, to mitigation, enforcement, and civil penalty calculations. Staff has incorporated stakeholder comments that are consistent with the scope and goals of this effort, recognizing that all revisions to the ordinance must balance input from these 31 groups with very diverse applications and interpretations of the code. Not an easy task, but we're getting there. Staff considered all feedback to represent each stakeholder group fairly and equitably with the goal of proposing updated ordinance language, which can be consistently implied, interpreted, represented, and enforced. The feedback to date includes over 300 pages of double-sided email communications, including over 40 exhibits and/or illustrations, and roughly 200 phone conversations to clearly discuss and truly understand the intent of such communication. So just a heads up to the board, rather than print all of this feedback and give you a stack, six-inch stack of paper in your packet for our meeting next month, staff will be providing the board with a link to access this feedback and/or a thumb drive that'll be included in your agenda packet for you to conveniently access such items. So the ULDR Section 4721, as it stands, is the Landscape and Tree Preservation Ordinance. It currently has 18 subsections, and that document is currently around 30 pages. The revised ordinance language is largely within the framework and layout of the existing ordinance, and it only covers 16 of the 18 subsections. Two sections are not proposed for revisions. The current language is adequate and will remain, is proposed to remain. And the document for you to review next month is 97 pages total. So it's a significant document. The revised ordinance language includes additional language to the intent and purpose of the ordinance, the addition of documents incorporated by reference language, significant definition updates, the addition of engineered soil and modular suspended pavement system requirements, exemptions for tree removal in accordance with Section 163.045 and 163.3209 of the Florida State statutes, additional language requiring a landscape and tree document packet upon permit submittal, updated soil analysis requirement language, updates to tree and palm selection, location, and design language, revised surface cutout and soil volume measurement requirements, revised maintenance responsibility requirements, addition of language for stormwater and water body shoreline considerations, revised vehicular use area language, increased parking waiver for greater tree protection opportunities, outline landscaping requirements language to be more user-friendly, to be a more user-friendly document. So we kind of reprioritized different sections, and some sections had big paragraphs. We just broke those paragraphs down to be in a checklist format, to be user-friendly. We prioritized tree preservation section to actually begin with tree protection. We added significant language for tree protection, root pruning, root protection, root protection and root pruning, tree relocation, tree pruning permitting, mitigation calculations, tree abuse, and enforcement and civil remedies. We clarified the public street tree planting project section. And lastly, we updated language for prohibited landscaping. So as I said earlier, the two sections not being proposed, the landscaping required very short, very short subsection, no changes. And the irrigation, as Glenn referenced in the beginning, was already updated when we did the Florida-friendly compatibility study for the document as is, and the current language is proposed to remain. So in conclusion, we hope this brief overview touched on our original assignment and our progress, our outreach activity that was conducted, the subsections of the ordinance that have been revised, and a confer, hopefully, we will be able to confirm a date to bring this document to you for your official review. Glenn and I are here and happy to help with any questions or concerns that you might have. And thank you again for this opportunity to be with you this evening.
Thank you so much. Ella, would you like us to? Well, first of all, let me ask the board. Do, does the board believe that? I believe that Ella told me that our next meeting is fairly well populated with applications. Does the board desire to have a special meeting on these changes to the landscape code? Yes. All right.
Well, let me just ask this. It's fairly populated, but what does that mean? I mean, we're finishing tonight, you know, by 8 o'clock. Does, if we were to stay an extra half hour on the next meeting or 45 minutes? I don't know. I'm just asking staff if you just feel like that's something we can do in that amount of time? Or do we call a special meeting for something that may last 45 minutes or an hour and get all of the staff out? So I just wanted to ask that.
Yeah, no.
Either way.
Thank you for that question, Ms. Furtig. In the past, the board has asked that when staff anticipates that there's some items that are going to be presented where there's a significant amount of public input to advise you of that as a potential special meeting. And we have looked at that agenda and we are aware of a lot of public participation that's expected in regards to this ordinance revision. So that is our recommendation. Of course, that it's completely at the board's discretion, but our recommendation would be to set a special meeting.
Thank you, Ella. Bill?
Just having heard what I did and the number of revisions that are involved, 16 of 18, and then a 90-page document, and then public participation. You know, certainly from my, I'd like to see a special meeting set aside just for that because it just looks like it'd be a long meeting and there's a lot to learn as a board member about all of these changes. And then a 90-page document in and of itself on top of a potentially full agenda would be a lot to deal with.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Jackie? Yeah, I agree with everything that Bill just said. And I'm extremely interested in this ordinance, the amount of trees that we are losing in this city, oak trees, specimen trees. I mean, just, I really want to dig into this and hopefully this will end up being a good ordinance and we need to look at it and we need to probably have a lot of public participation. So a special meeting is definitely appropriate. Thank you, Jackie. Jay or Mike?
I'll take this one, Mike Waymoth. Hi, Kimberly, just a quick question. How complete is the proposed draft to date? I mean, if we get this document and with the size that everybody's, is it ready to go? Is this, is it ready to be distributed?
Kimberly, if you could help address the question about the ordinance and its state that it's currently at?
Sure. Glenn is the lead on organizing, coordinating that, so he probably has a better idea of the status.
Glenn?
Yeah, I, yes. I think if, as I understand your question, it's when will we be ready to be released? Is that correct?
Yeah. As soon. Is the proposed draft up to, is, are you complete with the proposed draft? Is there any more work that's going to be done to it? And we're setting dates to meet, you know, like to get it. I can't, I'm not a speed reader. So I need quite a bit of time to read.
The draft is 100 pages long. We, Kimberly and I had a discussion about that. And we are planning, we are planning on having it ready to go by the end of next week, if not earlier.
And the group of 13 stakeholders, they would support what you're putting forward?
Well, we've had a lot of stakeholders. So we have tried to balance that. And I can't say everyone is perfectly happy with what we had, but we have tried to come to a resolution that balances that whole diversity of stakeholders and goes back to the original intent and direction that we received from the City Commission.
But for more, more or less, you've achieved what the stakeholders have asked of you guys.
We feel that we.
There's been a fair sounding? Has there been a fair sounding, Glenn?
As, yeah, as our slide showed you, we have had a public input period that started in June 2020 and went up until October 2020. And then we extended it into receiving some additional comments and doing some additional outreach after that.
Thank you. Chair?
I have other hands, Jay. Hang on a second. Mary?
Okay, I'm going to just follow along with what Mike just said. If we, if this is ready at the end of next week and we're giving notice to the public and it's this long and this complicated, it's not just us reading it, but it's the public reading it. So I think whenever you're ready to distribute it, we need to look several, several weeks out from that. And I don't know if the eighth is too soon. On the other hand, I'm just looking, trying to look up spring breaks for the schools and see when those are. So I'll leave that conversation. But I, I think time for review and giving the public time to review it and gather. I know how important this is to a lot of people in the community, so.
Bill?
Just one other comment. I mean, obviously, it's 2020 and, you know, from June to now, given the significance of what's being discussed here, and we were in the middle of COVID, where I questioned whether or not everybody that had an interest in really sharing their thoughts was able to do that, whether they were noticed, whether they couldn't, you know, most, I got to imagine all of these meetings were virtual. So I just want to make sure that everybody that has some input as we start to normalize really has their input. This is a, this is a huge thing and a huge document and a lot of changes. And they would know better than I, looking at all the meetings they had. But I just wonder, given COVID and knowing how difficult and strange things have been, whether we've had all the input that we really need to get to the end of this thing.
I think, Bill, that there's always going to be someone who says they didn't know about it. The staff has, you know, done their usual thorough and diligent process. And there will be additional time for people who are interested in this topic but unaware to come to the table and review the information. So I don't know that delaying it from the dates proposed in March would do any good.
Okay, just wanted to make my concerns noted.
Very much appreciated. Jay?
Thank you, Chair. I would, I'm okay with us setting a special meeting for this. I would propose or ask that we, as a board, have at least. I would propose or ask that we, as a board, have at least two weeks with the material in our hands prior to that meeting take place. We often, as a board, receive materials, you know, and have, you know, for maybe four days to review, you know, hundreds of pages of material prior to our meeting. And I think, you know, a 100-page document to have for only a week, and, you know, it's, it's not enough time.
Thank you, Jay. Jackie?
I propose that we schedule a special meeting for March 29th. That was one of the days.
And I was just going to propose the 30th. Are you bad on the 30th?
No, no, I'm good either way, Mary.
Okay.
Now, my calendar says March 29th is a holiday. I don't know what holiday that is.
It's Tree Preservation Day.
Oh, there you go.
I made that up.
Oh, okay. I still have a hand raised on the city laptop. Mike or Jay?
Sorry, that's meant to be taken down.
Okay. It's still there. Okay. All right. So does, Ella, would you like us to decide the date tonight, or do you want us to email you?
Yeah, no, you'd have to decide on a date tonight so we can advertise it properly. And, and also, I wanted to add that we can certainly make the accommodation, if you do choose one of those two dates, the 20th, 30th, to give you the two weeks' notice, I mean, to give you the, the materials two weeks in advance of that meeting.
Okay, so Mary and Jackie have talked about March 29th.
No, we're talking about.
No, Mary wants the 30th.
The 30th.
March 30th. Is there anyone on the board that is unavailable on March 30th? I hear no one.
Perfect.
See no hands raised. So it appears that March 30th is the date.
That's so much easier than emailing 900 people.
6:00 p.m.?
6:00 p.m., is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, pardon me?
I mean, it is, it's a holy holiday. I mean, I guess it could be fine. It's fine.
Jay, is there another time that would better suit you?
Hey, if that's the case, let's not do it because it'll impact the public. And I don't, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that.
Yeah. I mean, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that's passed over. It's, it's a very observed holiday.
Yeah, no, we can't.
Is the 29th better?
It's from the 27th until April 3rd.
Okay, so.
But the first two days are usually observed, so.
Ella, could we find some, I guess you need to go back to the drawing board. Are there some dates in early April that might work?
About Wednesday, the 31st.
March 29th is a Monday?
No.
Yes, so these, so these dates, Chair, were vetted with the city clerk's office and checked for conflicts against other meetings, so unfortunately.
So you don't know that the 31st is open, is that correct?
The 29th and the 30th are both open.
Okay. So Ella, would you be able to send us a couple of more dates? And I'm afraid we're going to have to do this by way of email. But I, as I understand it, the board wants more time than March 8th, and March 29th and March 30th are a holiday, and we're worried about board and public member participation. So would you be able to give us a couple more dates after March 30th?
Certainly.
Chair, I'm, I'm just looking at the dates here, and I apologize, I'm going back. While it is a holiday, the, the two most observed dates are the 27th and the 28th. So I do think that the 29th or 30th will be fine.
Oh, perfect. Oh, okay. So do we want to go back to considering March 30th?
Thank you.
All right. Any comments against March 30th, or, or any comments unhappy with March 30th? I don't have any hands. I don't see any waving or no's. So is it March 30th? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? I hear no nays, and I see nothing. So it is March 30th. Thank you so much, everyone. All right. So is there anything else under number five, communication to the City Commission?
Yes. So I just wanted to follow up with the board on the communication we sent to the commission at the last meeting regarding Third Avenue and Andrews Avenue Bridge Crossing. I was there at the meeting, and it was well-received by the commission. And then afterwards, I received an email from Karen Warfel from Transportation and Mobility, who said, and I quote, "The Southeast Third Avenue Bridge is under the jurisdiction of Broward County. They have a project to refurbish the bridge opening with design in 2022, next year. I have shared all the comments and concerns from the Planning and Zoning Board, and some of the initial concept ideas that we have had when we were discussing it with FDOT previously. Their Division Director has said they are happy to work with us on making these improvements, and will now begin with the feasibility analysis for the Northeast Third Avenue Bridge project to improve bicycle and pedestrian accommodations as part of the project." So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that the communication was not only heard, but will hopefully impact a, is now impacting the commencement of a feasibility analysis to make these improvements.
That's great. Jay, thank you so much. I mean, you took that on, and you ran with it, and you got a, you got a response, and you got feedback. That's wonderful. We, we look forward to hearing more about that. Anything else under communication to the City Commission? Anything under for the good of the city? I see nothing, I hear nothing. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all so much. Thank you, staff. Thank you, presenters. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Bridgette.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Good night.